We've got everybody here as long as I can. Good evening, welcome to the April 1st, 2015 Meeting of Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. We have five public hearings scheduled for this evening, the first of which is a rezoning application for approximately 26.36 acres located north of Joby Jackson Parkway to be rezoned from light industrial to heavy industrial, and four acres to be rezoned from light industrial to RS-15, Parks Harney Investments and Sarah L. Jones Johnson are the applicants. Mr. Blomley, good evening.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, good evening members of the Planning Commission. Our first public hearing tonight, as you mentioned Chairman Lamb, is a request along the north side of Joby Jackson Parkway, and if Cable Department could put the map up, there we go. The property that is colored in orange is requested to be rezoned from light industrial to heavy industrial, that's 26.36 acres, and the color in the light blue, or the property in the light blue color is requested to be zoned light industrial to RS-15. And just a little bit of history about this property, there are four developed lots in the Jackson Park subdivision, those are the smaller lots fronting directly along Joby Jackson Parkway, and just to the east of those four developed lots, the southern portion of what was the Jones Johnson track was annexed into the city and zoned light industrial simultaneous with annexation back in 2009. Recently Parks Harney Investments has purchased the southernmost 20 acres of the Jones Johnson property, and the four acres that is in the blue color, they opted not to purchase, and that property, that four acres, has been retained by Ms. Jones Johnson, who owns the property to the north of this property, which fronts along Manchester Highway. Parks Harney has requested that their property be zoned to heavy industrial. Mr. Harney has indicated to staff that he has had a good deal of interest in this property from industrial users, but the light industrial zoning does not suit their needs for what they want to do. The heavy industrial zoning does allow a greater variety of industrial uses, and the heavy industrial zoning, according to Mr. Harney, would permit a number of these uses for the users that he has had view the property and show interest in that property. Now, the remaining four acres of the track, of the Jones Johnson track that's in the city, Ms. Jones Johnson has requested since that four acres, Mr. Harney is not, has not purchased, she has requested that that four acres be zoned from light industrial to RS-15. And I believe that there is a residence on the northern portion of this property along Manchester Highway, I'm not certain if that's her residence, but she has requested this four acres be zoned RS-15. The property that is located in the county to the north and to the east is zoned RM in the county, which is not residential multifamily in the county, it's medium density residential. Also adjacent to the property to the west is additional properties zoned light industrial in the Elam Farms Development, it's the, it's a large warehouse development, and further to the west across Elam Farms Parkway, also zoned light industrial is the Schwan Cosmetics facility that is currently under construction. To the south, along the north side of Joby Jackson Parkway are several light industrial uses, including Pretoria, Perfect Equipment, and Interstate Warehousing, and to the south, south of Joby Jackson Parkway, there are several large tracts that are zoned heavy industrial, including the Amazon facility and the NHK facility. The property to the, a little bit further to the east that you'll see on the map, zoned PRD, is the Sunset Ridge Planned Residential Development, which contains both townhomes and single-family detached homes. It's approximately 600 feet away from the subject property. Of course, any development that were to occur on this property, should it be zoned heavy industrial, would have to meet the city's minimum development requirements when a site plan is submitted, including any property line that it shares with a property zoned for single-family purposes, a 20-foot wide Type E landscape buffer will be required along that property line. With that being said, Mr. Harney is available if you have any questions for him. I believe he does want to say a brief word, and he has an exhibit to show to the Planning Commission, and after Mr. Harney speaks, the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the City Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Mr. Harney, good evening.
Good evening. As Mr. Blomley said, I just wanted to add a little bit to this, and I'm technology challenged, but he told me if I flip up this laptop and ask somebody to put it on the screen, there'll be an aerial that will explain the property a little better from a standpoint of buffering. If you see where the four lots are that we developed as Jackson Park a few years ago that front Joby Jackson, then as Mr. Blomley said, we have acquired the 20 acres immediately behind it. But what you'll see is, especially on the east side and to the north side, there's quite a bit of heavy evergreen type forested areas on both sides of that property, sort of buffering between it and properties that are on Manchester Highway. Immediately to the bottom of the 20 acres is, like he said, the Perfect Equipment property. Immediately next to Perfect Equipment is Interstate Warehousing, which is actually adding on to their facility right now. This is an older aerial photograph, I think they're actually where you see the gravel areas is about an additional 100,000 feet they're in construction on right now. Our intention is, is to leave the good evergreen buffers along the, where we can on the north edge and the eastern edge to create that buffer that Mr. Blomley talked about. As he said, this general area is, you know, of various needs wise, industrial use wise, and of course, right across the street is zoned heavy industrial today. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Harney? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for members of the Planning Commission, or the staff, or anybody before we open the public hearing? Before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. I'll open the public hearing and invite anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against a proposal. Please, when you come to the microphone, state your name and give your address for the record. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes, so everybody has an opportunity to come up. Make all your comments and questions to the Planning Commission. If you do have questions, the staff will make notes of your questions, and will attempt to answer those questions at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open this public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak.
My name is Keith Jones, I live at 127 10B Drive, I'm in the Magnolia Traces, I'm just barely outside the city. And I'm a refugee from New Jersey, and I know what it's like in New Jersey, and I'd hate to see New Jersey come here. Where I live, you could put a toxic waste dump next to a city reservoir without any problem. I don't think really that heavy industrial uses, I thought, when I read the zoning code, it looks to me like the whole idea of light industrial is not to mix heavy industrial next to residential areas. And there are houses in this development, and there are houses that back, back right up to the Amazon and the, and the NHK property, and I think it's really a bad policy to do this kind of a mixing thing. When I look at what's, when I see the light industrial, it's obviously designed to protect residences. You can't have, you can't have odors, you can't have vibrations, you can't have, what else is there? There are four things. Smoke, odors, noise, or vibrations. So evidently, the person who's, who's doing this application is thinking that he's going to have some of these problems, and we live right next to it. There are a lot of houses, there are houses on probably three sides of this thing. When I look at what's involved in heavy industrial areas, I'm amazed that the, that the Amazon sites and the NHK sites were actually zoned heavy industrial. I think it's crazy. You can put a slaughterhouse, auto dismantling, paper mills, sawmills, petroleum, coal products refining, scrap metal, storage and distribution. So I think, to me, once this is rezoned, the game's over. You can talk about evergreens and buffers and mitigation, but once it's, it's a legal use, there's nothing you can do about it. So the, so the key decision's right now, and I was a reporter, I covered a lot of Planning Commission meetings, it seemed to me like, once you get into the mitigation phase, it's almost like an artist's rendering. It looks really great on paper, but when you get down to the reality, it's, it's not too good. So anyway, that's, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anybody else? Okay. In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Questions from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, would not the LI who's being rezoned to RS-15 be in itself a great buffer? Would that would go with you, Mr. Blomley?
Mr. Young, did I miss something somewhere? Well, the, the property itself is surrounded, or is, is adjacent to industrial, light industrial zoning on its, on its west side, and on its south side, it's also adjacent to light industrial zoning. On its north side and on its east side, it's adjacent to large tracts that are in the county. Most of the homes adjacent, that are on these large tracts are closer to Manchester Highway. As Mr. Harney showed on his aerial photo, the back portions of these tracts are largely undeveloped, and, and have a good deal of trees on them. So while it is adjacent to medium density, medium density residential zoning in the county, most of those homes are along Manchester Highway and not directly adjacent to the subject property.
When we built Joby Jackson, it was our major industrial, when we built Joby Jackson, it was our major industrial area, and it seems like it's progressing slowly but surely into what it was designed to be, whether it be light industrial or heavy industrial. So you've got a good mix of both, so it's not inconsistent with what's already out there to do this.
Yes, sir, there is, there is both light industrial and heavy industrial located along Joby Jackson Parkway.
We still will have a site plan approval process for anything coming up where buffers will be considered and spelled out indefinitely. I know Mr. Harney said he was planning on leaving as much of the natural vegetation there as possible.
Yes, sir, we would definitely see a site plan before any development. That site plan would have to demonstrate compliance with our zoning and development regulations, including buffering. You know, we certainly, you know, prefer for existing vegetation to be left where possible, regardless of if he leaves existing vegetation or supplements that with, with new materials or both. A Type E 20-foot wide landscape buffer will be required, and that's our most restrictive buffer, because it would be industrial zoning directly adjacent to single-family zoning, particularly on the north and east sides.
Is the 20-foot buffer the same if it's light industrial or heavy industrial up against residential?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Chairman?
Sir.
I'd just like to add, when we met with Mr. Harney on this property, we did, staff did provide him a copy of the city's, and it's not new, we, we adopted a, or modified our noise ordinance, and we did provide him with a copy of that. We are cognate that, that if it was a problem, so we provided him with that and told him anybody that would develop on this property would definitely have to comply with the noise requirements of our city noise ordinance, in which he was provided a copy.
Okay.
So we did consider noise in this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Any other questions or comments? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval, subject to your staff comments. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Second public hearing tonight is a rezoning application for approximately 4.47 acres to be rezoned from Commercial Highway to RM16, located along the east side of Agri Park Drive. Beach and Farrah Properties are the applicants. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you Chairman Lamb. The subject property, as you mentioned, is located along the east side of Agri Park Drive, it is just south of the intersection of Agri Park and John R. Rice Boulevard. In fact, this property is a double frontage lot, and it has frontage on both Agri Park and John R. Rice Boulevard. It's currently zoned Commercial Highway, but the applicants feel that the development of this property, specifically on the, the western side of the track, is better served by a multifamily residential zoning classification. They have requested that the 4.47 acres of the 6.84 acre tract, that is on the western two-thirds of the tract, be zoned to RM16 from its current zoning of Commercial Highway. The RM16 zoning would allow approximately 72 dwelling units on the subject property by right, and as you know, in addition, per the zoning ordinance, additional units may be permitted if certain amenities are provided on site. The applicants do feel that the Commercial Highway zoning is still the appropriate zoning for the frontage of the tract, the two, the two acres or so along John R. Rice Boulevard, but just that it's not appropriate anymore, in their opinion, along Agri Park Drive. Specifically considering the apartment complex that was approved just to the west of the subject property called Vintage Blackman, which was originally approved under the name Orchard Grove. Also, the Harper's Point apartment complex is directly to the south of the subject property with frontage along John R. Rice Boulevard. So considering the fact that there are two additional, or two adjacent multifamily residential developments, the applicant thought it was appropriate to request rezoning for this 4.47 acres. As I mentioned, the RM16 zoning is, or there are multifamily uses with Orchard Grove and Harper's Point. The property along John R. Rice Boulevard is Commercial Highway, as is the property to the south along Agri Park Drive, and the property to the north is zoned PCD, and that's for the Lane-Agri Park and the Paws Pet Adoption and Welfare Services operated by Rutherford County. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Of course, the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation for City Council, and Mr. Clay Beach is in attendance tonight if you have any questions for him.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
Mr. Blomley, is, is John Rice in the city and the county?
There is a portion of...
I'm getting there.
Yeah, there is a portion of John R. Rice Boulevard that remains in the unincorporated county, that's further to the north of here, in between the intersection of Gresham Lane, I believe, and the area with the new GM dealership. But yes, sir, there is a portion in my, my recollection that remains in the county.
Well, that's the perfect lead-up. Mr. Whitaker, I don't know what this is on our 25-year traffic study or not, but we might want to look at putting John Rice on that, because that's a bottleneck for everybody.
We'll be happy to study it.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of this commission?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Third public hearing is a rezoning application for approximately 2.86 acres located along the south side of Veterans Parkway to be rezoned from RM16 to Commercial Fringe, and approximately 12.59 acres to be rezoned from RM16 to RS8. Cornerstone Development LLC is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you Chairman Lamb. Subject property is located along the south side of Veterans Parkway. It was annexed into the city back in 2005, when that was still known as Kimbrough Road, and it was zoned as a PRD, for the Kimbrough Place PRD, simultaneous with its annexation back in 2005. Subsequently in 2008, it was rezoned as a, as the Indigo PRD, which was a mixed-use development with commercial along the frontage of Veterans Parkway, multifamily residential south of the commercial, and then single-family residential further to the south on the subject property. The Indigo subdivision, or the Indigo development never came to fruition in that form, and then the property was subsequently rezoned in 2012, this tract to RM16, and the balance of the property to RS8. Cornerstone Development purchased the portion of the property zoned RS8 several years ago, and is in the process of developing a subdivision on that property, coincidentally called Indigo, but no relation to the former PUD that was approved back in 2008. Now, the remaining 25 acres was zoned to RM16 in 2012. Cornerstone did not purchase that property at that time, but it has since obtained an option on the property, or a contract on the property. However, it, Cornerstone does not feel that the RM16 property is the most appropriate zoning classification, and then so they have made a two-pronged zoning request for that 25 acres. The southernmost 12.59 acres, they have requested to be rezoned to RS8, which is the same zoning as the property to the west that Cornerstone is already developing. Mr. Mingi with Cornerstone feels that the RS8 zoning is appropriate and could possibly serve as an extension of his development at some point in the future. He also feels that with the number of rooftops that are being constructed in this area, that the, that the road frontage along Veterans Parkway would be appropriate to rezone to Commercial Fringe for some neighborhood commercial uses. Specifically, Mr. Mingi and Cornerstone Development also develop daycare centers, and he sees this as possibly a location for a daycare center in the future, if not a daycare center, possibly some other neighborhood services that could serve the surrounding neighborhoods. So the 2.86 acres that is shown in the purple color on the screen in front of you, he has requested to be rezoned to Commercial Fringe. In its current zoning, the 25 acres zoned RM16 would yield 400 multifamily dwelling units by right. With the remaining 9.55 acres that will stay RM16 if this rezoning request is granted, and with the 12.59 acres zoned RS8, that will cut down the number of dwelling units by about half to about 200 dwelling units on the subject property, in addition to the 2.86 acres zoned Commercial Fringe. So this request would significantly reduce the density of the subject property, especially with the southern half being requested to be rezoned to RS8. It is important to note that along the east side of the subject property, you'll notice that the requested Commercial Fringe does not go all the way over to the eastern property line, and that was done by design. There is an existing single-family home directly adjacent to the eastern property line along Veterans Parkway. Mr. Mingi and Cornerstone have left a 60-foot strip of RM16 along the eastern property line, and that will serve as not only an area for a landscape buffer, but also a buffer of distance to provide additional separation from the commercial uses to that, to that existing single-family home. In that 60 feet, you'll likely see the required landscape buffer, as well as the driveway for any potential multifamily development that would occur on the, the middle portion of this tract. With that being said, Mr. Clyde Roundtree is in attendance and available to answer any questions that you have regarding this rezoning. He is representing Mr. Mingi and Cornerstone Development, and of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions as well, either before or after the public hearing.
Okay. I guess he has anything to say at this time, so if not, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Same people as last time. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any more questions or comments from the Planning Commission? We're ready for a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The next public hearing is a PUD amendment for approximately 12.17 acres along the west side of Fortress Boulevard in the Victory Station PUD. Murfreesboro IL AL Investors LLC is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you Chairman Lamb. Subject property is located along the west side of Fortress Boulevard, just to the south of Lazarus Way and to the east of Garcia Boulevard. It is a part of the Victory Station Planned Unit District PUD zoning that was approved initially around the year 2000, and then has been amended several times. This is another amendment to that PUD. The applicants, Murfreesboro IL AL Investors LLC, have a contract on the subject property, which is identified as parcel F of the Victory Station PUD. However, they do not wish to develop it as it was originally approved, and, which is as a traditional multifamily development. The subject property, as it was approved and as it is currently zoned, is zoned for a 176-unit multifamily residential development with 384 parking spaces. The applicants are requesting to amend the PUD in order to allow a 176-unit independent living and assisted living facility with a memory care wing as well. The proposed development is to be called the Crossings at Victory Station, and will contain, as I mentioned, 176 units, including 102 independent living units, 48 assisted living units, and 26 memory care units. In comparison to the current PUD plan, the number of parking spaces would be reduced from 384 to 165, and the open space provided would increase from about 55% to 71%, according to the applicant. The subject property on its south side is bordered by a parcel that is zoned for retail uses in the Victory Station planned development, on its north side by the Victory Point subdivision, which is the single-family component of the Victory Station subdivision, and on its west side by the Trafalgar Square subdivision, which is zoned RS12 and RS15. The plan, the layout does have some significant changes in comparison with the multifamily plan that was approved with the, or the multifamily zoning that is currently in place, and the, one of the significant changes, though, that I, that I do want to mention is with regards to the number of stories. The applicants are proposing that the number of stories increase from two to three, but they're attempting to mitigate that by bringing the buildings further away from the adjacent single-family residential uses. And those details, Mr. Scotty Burnick with Reagan Smith and Associates, Reagan Smith Associates is going to go over those details in, in just a moment. And Mr. Paul Sacks is here representing Murfreesboro IL AL Investors, and I believe he'd like to say a few words before Mr. Burnick gives his presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
I'm Paul Sacks with Smith Packett. Thank you for allowing me to come back before everybody. Smith Packett is the parent company for Murfreesboro IL Smith Packet is the parent company for Murfreesboro IL AL Investors, and that's not Illinois, Alabama. That is independent living, assisted living. We're excited to be here. As I mentioned in the last meeting, we're a small company, but we do a lot of senior housing. We're actually one of the largest senior housing developers. Family-owned, family-operated. We've been in business almost 35 years. And one thing unique, we have our own operating company, so we will not only own this building, but we will also run it. So, we're here for, and this is going to be a long-term investment for us coming into Murfreesboro. I wanted to mention, Scotty's going to talk about the land use, but I wanted to mention a few things about the building, because I know one of the council members had the questions at the last meeting. Our building is set up in two very distinct communities. Half the building is independent living, half the building is assisted living with a memory care component. And each side of the building, they have their own entryway, they have their own activity areas, their own dining room, their own bank of elevators to go up to their units, and then they have a number of shared services. There's a movie theater, gymnasium, hair salon. So, it's very unique in a sense that it's two communities, but they're together into one building, and they share a lot, they have a lot of interaction. And this allows residents to really age in place. You can start in the independent living and progress into assisted living without having to go to a whole new community. The average age of our independent living residents is about 80 years old. The average age of our assisted living residents is about 85. Now, what that means is we're going to have very little impact on this area. We're not going to have a lot of residents that drive. Our staff that comes in, most of them work off-peak shifts, 7:00 to 3:00, 3:00 to 11:00. So, it's not going to have a lot of impact on the peak hour traffic. Our residents are quiet, they're not going to have a lot of parties, and for the most part, they're in bed by 9:00 o'clock at night. Their impact's going to be, you're going to see them out walking. They're going to be using the sidewalks. We put in a lot of outdoor amenities. They're going to be out walking, using those outdoor amenities, taking advantage of the great weather we have today. So, I'm here to answer any questions. I'm going to let Scotty talk briefly about the land use plan.
Good afternoon. My name is Scotty Burnick. I'm a landscape architect with Reagan Smith, and here on behalf of Smith Packet. I'd like to pull up an exhibit and give you just a summary. Mr. Blomley did an excellent job on the presentation, and Bullet pointed it quite well. Let me pull up in the slide one second here. If cable wouldn't mind going to the screen here. As noted, you know, the previously, in the current approved PUD allows for 16 buildings sort of sprinkled throughout the site, and that allows 176 units. We're proposing one three-story structure with 176 units. I'd like to note the difference on this, there's a comparison chart and then a graphic that shows on top the approved PUD with the multifamily development, and then on the bottom with the proposed PUD. I'd like to note that we've increased the linear footage between our building and the property line significantly. On the north side, we've almost doubled that, and on the west side, we've quadrupled that. In addition to not only providing a significant increase in building setback, we're also proposing a 20-foot-wide landscape buffer. This landscape buffer would allow for existing vegetation to stay in place where applicable and where grades allow, and where it doesn't, we'd be able to provide supplemental evergreen Here's the site, you know, the master plan as an overall site. I'd like to note that we're not only increasing the site or the building distance off the property line, but we're increasing the open space by about 10% to 15%. We're reducing the site parking. As you guys know, that's a direct result of the zoning code for this use, and as that parallels with parking, you know that traffic generation, trip generation is going to go down. We did a quick study and showed that about, on average, about 80-something trips less than the multifamily development. In terms of amenities, as Paul mentioned, these would be very passive-type amenities, dog parks and a walking trail, whereas the multifamily-approved complex would allow a swimming pool and tennis courts, very active-style amenities, so very different in terms of that. I'd also like to note that we've submitted this plan to the Design Review Committee for the Victory Station PUD, and they've approved it. As noted in the pattern booklet, whatever's not shown in here, we would still have to meet the general guidelines of the Victory Station PUD. In closing, I'd like just to note that, you know, we're increasing the building separation from the adjacent parcels, we're creating more open space, reducing parking, reducing trips. I think most importantly, we're really recognizing the concern for the community in this area about the amount of multifamily being developed. I think this is a, you know, we're hearing them, and this is a different use that would provide a great transition. Architecturally, if you look on the screen here, it's very residential in nature. There's a brick veneer along the bottom and parts of the second story, and the remaining part of the second and the third story would be almost a cement board like a hardy plank. Again, it provides a great transition from the single-family to the north to the future retail down to the south. Both Paul and I are available for questions at the appropriate time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for either one of our applicants? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Ladies and gentlemen, Joe Swanson, 1188 Park. I'm here to represent Swanson Companies, the developer of the Victory Station PUD. Chairman Lamb, staff, and commissioners, we have worked very well with Paul. There have been no hiccups in our communications. When Joseph was here, we had discussions with him as it related to this project and the uniqueness of this project that it brings to this area and this development. I think, in fact, I know that the Swanson family is very pleased with it, and I would be here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Anybody else?
Rod Rogers, 407 Carmel Drive in Victory Point. I would like to consider when this project is built to do some lanes that help the traffic get in and out of the complex. Typically, up and down Fortress, the interests and exits off of Fortress are right up to the edge, and there's just not large, there's not a large shoulder on either side of that road. So, turn lanes are very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Nobody? I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from members of the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a very well-done project. It's going to take the density down a whole lot. It's going to provide a very needed service. The company that's doing it concentrates only on that particular aspect of the construction industry. Mr. Swanson has a large, well-laid-out master plan, and this is changing the master plan. It's downsizing the master plan. I think it's a great project for the citizens in the city of Murfreesboro, so I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The final public hearing of the evening is a proposed amendment to the sign ordinance regarding temporary signs and signs that are exempt from permitting fees. The city of Murfreesboro, legal and building codes departments are the applicants. Ms. Kerr, good evening.
Thank you Chairman Lamb, members of the commission. I have some riveting sign information for you all this evening. I hope you'll bear with me. I will present it as quickly as possible and as effectively as possible. It is a lot of information to take in, so I want to be as thorough as possible. For quite some time, staff has been working on sign ordinance revisions to both the temporary signs as well as permanent signs. Tonight, the section that we will be discussing for a public hearing is on temporary signs. We have emailed the proposed changes to sign companies, businesses, and citizens. We advertised and held a stakeholders' meeting on March 3 for information and feedback. The packet that we actually gave you a couple of weeks ago has actually changed from feedback that we have received from those meetings as well as staff meetings. The following proposed sign ordinance amendments will be for temporary signs, Section 25 and 1/4, 25. Staff proposes to restructure all temporary sign information into one section within the sign ordinance, to simplify and reduce confusion, to better accommodate businesses, citizens, and sign companies, to locate and understand regulations of temporary signs more efficiently. To achieve this, staff proposes removing all information about temporary signs, regulations within various sections throughout the current overall sign ordinance, and placing them in a revised temporary sign ordinance section with general regulations and conditionally allowed temporary signs for a complete temporary sign ordinance section with all the pertinent information. Removal and restructuring of the sections of the current temporary sign ordinance regulations will be to remove regulations from definitions, also with prohibited signs, signs in the exempt from permit section, signs from violations and penalties section, and removal of certain sign sections. So, all of those will be placed into one section together where everything will be readily available, and they won't have to be looking through the whole ordinance, finding all the regulations on temporary signs. Within this restructuring, staff proposes some changes to conditionally allowable temporary signs. Right now, currently in the city of Murfreesboro, you are allowed three temporary signs on any one given lot. Staff is proposing to increase that to four temporary signs on each lot throughout the city of Murfreesboro. That's going to be, you know, some people think four is enough, and some other people are going to think that four is not enough. Four is what we are proposing. Reducing the maximum size of other temporary sign, which is a conditionally allowed type of temporary sign, in the commercial highway, commercial local, heavy industrial, and light industrial zones from 64 square foot to 32 square foot. Right now, the Gateway District overlay, other temporary signs are allowed to be 32 square foot, so this will make it conform across the entire city that all signs will be 32 square foot. Also, in the Gateway District overlay, signs are allowed to be 10-foot tall, and in commercial highway, heavy industrial, light industrial, and commercial local, signs are allowed to be 16-foot tall. So, we're proposing to reduce the commercial highway signs to 12-foot and increase the Gateway District overlay signs, which are 10-foot to 12-foot. So, that'll make it conforming all over the city as well, that all temporary sign heights would be 12 feet in height. We are proposing several new additions to our definitions. One would be to define a beacon as a type of a temporary sign. A beacon, it would be like a sign you would see at maybe a fair or a car lot that shines up into the light and moves back and forth to attract attention. Other cities have prohibited these because they are a nuisance, especially around airports, so we are going to be having this as a prohibited temporary sign. We also defined equipment and machinery sign, which would be a sign, say, at a convenience store that is on a garbage can, or a sign that's on a propane exchange tank. Informational, information on those equipments and machines, ATMs, stand-up ATMs, and things of that nature. And we just defined that. Holiday decorations, we put a definition for that. A mural. Murals are, have been a source of an issue in the past, trying to decide what they are. We never had a definition for a mural. We now have a definition for murals, which some people think that a sign on a window is a mural, when in fact, a definition of a sign in the dictionary says it is a sign painted on a wall. So, we have added a definition of a mural. And public art as well. And these are all types of signs that will be added to the exempt from permit and fee requirements as well. We are also defining, proposing to define a sandwich board sign. These would be like the signs you would see around the square out in front of a business. It could be a chalkboard sign that they write their menu on or what their specials are. We wanted to be able to allow the citizens to be able to have these types of signs, but we wanted to put some regulations on them. First and foremost, that they follow ADA guidelines, which is a five-foot setback from the curb. If there is a perpendicular or a parallel parking spot, the first 18 inches of that does not count. Towards that five foot, they have to go the additional 18 inches plus the five foot to meet the ADA requirements. If there is severe weather forecast, they would have to move those signs into their business at the time that that weather is forecast, and only manually changeable copy signs will be allowed on any type of sandwich board. We also are proposing a definition for vehicle signs, and these are currently and remains partly allowed and partly prohibited. A vehicle sign is prohibited when the vehicle is parked in a public right-of-way or on public property or private property so as to be visible from a public right-of-way, where the apparent purpose is to advertise or display a message, and the sign is not incidental to the primary use of the vehicle, which primary use is other than advertising. And parked in this prohibition does not include incidental stops of more than 30 minutes or less. So, if it's like the billboard signs you see driving around town that have to keep moving, that is their primary purpose. If they stop to grab a bite of lunch or use the restroom, they would be allowed to do that for no longer than 30 minutes at a time. We would also be proposing to decrease the number of days that an illegally temporary sign is held by the city when picked up by an inspector, from 30 days to 10 days. 30 days is an extremely long time, and we shuffle those signs around to be able to accommodate the space for them. We probably touch them on an average of five to six times trying to hold them for 30 days, so we're requesting that that be reduced to 10 days. The revisions would allow for pennants like the ones that you see on Main Street and around the city square that are for MTSU or Main Street or those types of pole pennants, that they would be allowed to be placed on private properties within the Gateway District overlay, such as at shopping centers, doctor's offices, complex-type facilities, car lots, and things of that nature, and they would only be allowed on private utility light poles. Pennants will not be allowed on decorative light poles on Medical Center Parkway and along other streets within the gateway. The revisions would also allow non-commercial holiday inflatables, stationary inflatables, in all commercial zones for 30 days with a signed permit but without a fee, and in residential zones without a permit or a fee. This would be like Santa Claus at Christmas time, Easter Bunny at Easter time, a pumpkin at Halloween. This is to allow people to show their spirit, even the businesses that desire to do so. The revisions would also require that temporary directional signs, which are another type of conditionally used temporary sign, that they would include the calendar date of the event. This is the only type of allowable off-premise temporary sign for advertising. These would be like open houses, advertising for a circus, maybe employment search on a specific day, antique show, anything of that nature. And these, again, must be on private property with the property owner's permission. They're allowed to have four signs per event, and they may be installed 10 days prior to the event and be removed within two days of the event. Again, that would mean that they would have to have the date of the event on the sign. And last but not least, we have window signs. The current code for window signage is very conflicting and very difficult to understand and very difficult to enforce. So, after stakeholders' meetings, numerous internal staff meetings and discussions and conflicting views on whether or not to regulate window signs, we are proposing to regulate window signs in the Gateway District Overlay with 50% coverage on the window signs on ground floor level and no window signage on the upper floor levels windows. And this is basically to maintain the, the high integrity and standard of sign restrictions that we do have currently in the Gateway Overlay District. And as drafted, this amendment would eliminate all regulation of window signs outside of the Gateway District Overlay. Furthermore with that, staff would propose that we would delay the enforcement of both the current 15% limitation and the proposed 50% limitation in the Gateway District Overlay for six months, allowing staff, following the effective date of the proposed amendment. And this would allow staff to give notifications to business owners who have installed window signage in or on more than 15% of the window surface and to allow those owners to recoup at least a portion of the expenses of acquiring and installing that window signage. And I do have pictures of window signage. If you are interested in seeing them, they are from surrounding cities. And if you would like to see those, I'd be happy to put them on the overhead.
Where we come this far, let's, listen.
Can I see the window signs? Because Paul was there and then walked back, that's what I'm thinking about.
Sure. Ms. Ives, do you have anything you'd like to say before we start in on it?
No, I don't think I have anything to start with. I think I saw Ms. Jones nodding affirmatively that she'd like to see the pictures.
Oh, yeah. I love pictures.
Yeah.
I made, I made the pictures.
We're visual.
But I wanted to clarify whether you were saying 15% or 50%?
Currently, it is 15%. But because it's so conflicting in different sections, under the temporary section, the prohibited section and the exempt section, they contradict. So, enforcement has been not, not as easily done as we would like for it to be. That's one of the reasons we're making a lot of these revisions. And so, it is 15% currently. And we are proposing to change it to 50% within the Gateway District Overlay on bottom floor, on ground floor level windows, no signs on the upper floor windows, and then it would not be regulated anywhere outside of the Gateway District Overlay in town.
Not, not regulated at all?
So, it'd be just 0% or 100%?
100%.
100%.
And, and that would probably be why it'd be beneficial, the conflict that has arisen with, between staff and, and businesses. And I do have a couple of pictures that might would help you understand the conflict that we have with, they think they're murals, if they don't have any writing on them, they're just designs and they may not have anything to do with their business. And it's just a way of blocking light out of their windows. And so, they put a graphic design, but there's a fine line between when it becomes a sign. And there, again, murals aren't designed really to be put on windows. If they put 15% of writing and then put a mural, according to them, they feel like that should be allowed. So, there's just some, some hesitation about how to go about. I mean, we will do whatever, whatever you all ask us to do.
I'm sure you have.
Let's look at the pictures.
Let's let Mrs. Jones lead the thought here. Mrs. Jones?
Well, I, I just want, we want to look at the pictures or do we want to have the public hearing first or what? Do you want to have what?
Well, I would think we need to go ahead and have a discussion first so the public hearing can maybe chime in on anything we have discussed.
I just want to see the pictures.
Okay.
I think Ms. Jones is saying less talks, less talking, more photos.
That's a scary picture right there.
Except for one.
Yes, Ms. Jones. And the rest of us are kind of scared. Not going anywhere till September. You got, you been to Czechoslovakia yet? There is no Czechoslovakia. Czech prepared.
Okay. This is a, an example of what is called perforated vinyl. They put it on the outside of the window, it's graphics on the vinyl, it lasts about two years. And when you put something like this up, some of them may not have any writing on it. They would just have a picture of a car, that it could be for a car store, it could be for a auto repair store, or it did have nothing to do with that car business. But they feel like it, it only has, well, this one has more like 30%, maybe 40% of writing and the other 60% is the, is the graphics. These are, they didn't have several light things around town. Of course, this is, no, these pictures are from Murfreesboro. Here's an example of another one.
50 all the way. You mean no regulation?
This is actually a, a digital, I have no. If you see on the left side and the right side, there's a man and a woman on there and this is for, they're actually advertising pictures, but again, it is completely covering multiple windows.
Now, what do you call, are these called screens or?
It is, it is a screen of type. It is a perforated. They can see out, but you can't see in. And it's perforated. It's got a bunch of little tiny holes all over it. It's what they use in the cars to put on the windows of the vans that they can see out and see the traffic around them, but you can't see in the van. It's the same concept placed on windows.
Do you have any pictures of one that we're going to like?
Those are the only ones that I have, unfortunately, of that style of windows.
I want to see some reason that we want to have any percentage of, of window sign.
And this is where it becomes an issue with no We have several examples of those. One other that I can show you is even just, you know, that particular building there, you could see that's about 30% of their window, approximately. And it's on all windows all the way around their building. And then, just as examples, this is a good example of a bad example.
Can I ask, you know, if you're covering up windows like that, is that not a safety issue or something? I mean, when you can't see in?
That is the, the reason we always only allowed 15% to be covered on the windows. That is for your fire and police to be able to see into the building.
Exactly.
We have had conversations with business owners that they, they don't understand the safety and efficacy of, of, of not only having 15% on their windows.
I know on some of the larger, nicer buildings, when we're talking about materials being used, we get a percentage of the stone, percentage of the brick, percentage of the other materials used, but we also get a percentage of the glass that they're using. And they talk about that a lot, but we never consider, when we think of glass, we think of being translucent somewhat, but we don't think about it being used as signage. So, depending on what the Planning Commission wants to do, obviously fluctuating from zero, allowed to do whatever you want to do, are we on sound ground legally?
I believe we are. What we are regulating with this is a time, place and manner of, we would be on very shaky ground to, for instance, put a maximum on the beer and tobacco stores and no regulation on other stores. That would be very difficult, I think impossible to defend.
I was thinking.
But if all our.
Yeah.
Of course, we would of course have an exception for real estate offices, but, but if, if the, if the rule is applicable equally to everyone, then I believe it'll be defensible. It's just the way it's currently written is the problem. It's not the 15% that's the problem, it's the way the, that it's written and organized within the ordinance makes it very difficult to say, this is what the rule is. I think if we have a, and I, I think we would be within limit, within rights to vary that in, in areas. And I think, for instance, that we've set a higher standard for a lot of things in the gateway. And to say, for instance, you know, as it's now drafted, it says up to 50% signage in the gateway on ground floor only, but we're not regulating the rest of the city. I think we would, that would be permissible. We, right now, we don't regulate the rest of the city in a lot of the ways that we regulate the gateway. And I think it'd be permissible if we wanted to say 50% in the rest of the city, 25% in the gateway. There's a variety of approaches we could take. Simplest, I suppose, is to say, gee, this is just too hard and it's, so we ought to not do it. I, I'm concerned that we'll have some unintended consequences throughout the city. But that's, you know, ultimately the, a recommendation from this body and then a decision on the part of council as to how, how we should go forward.
For the years that I've been on the Planning Commission, it seems like we have at least once a year, sign ordinance considerations that we address, probably annually, because it's always a moving target. And, you know, you have one side of the coin that asks, why do you want to regulate signs at all? Why don't, why don't you just let people do what they want to do? And then the other side that says, we don't need signs, you know? Sign, sign everywhere, sign. We, we don't need signs everywhere you turn around and cluttering up our city. So, it's a hot button for a lot of issues right there. And what we got to do is try to be fair to businesses, something that is logical and fair to all parties concerned without discriminating against one business or another. So, this window signage thing is, is very problematic. And, you know, while it would be good if we said something, I think, where you didn't have any window signs throughout the town, but I don't know if that's a fair thing to do. You know, I would think a percentage like 50% would be easier to enforce than 32.5% or whatever, you know? At least with that, you're, you're talking about half the glass area covered and the inspectors would be able to determine that easier, either that or zero.
A large majority of ordinances that I look at could be anywhere from 25 to 75%. It varies in range depending on from city to city. In Murfreesboro, if you look, there's, I would say probably 60% of the, of the windows in the city probably have more than 15% on their windows already. One consideration when looking at this would be enforcement of it and the time that it would take to give notice to everybody that is in violation at this time and, and be allowed to, to be able to remove that in a timely manner.
But if you're saying 60% of the businesses in Murfreesboro have window signs right now, then there's a whole lot of other types of window signs other than these like screen or perforated looking things. Is that true?
That's the new technology.
Yeah, well, 60, I would guess about 60% have more than the 15% that's allowed right now. I would say there's probably maybe a dozen of the screens around town right now, becoming ever more popular every day.
So, are you saying 60% of the people that have window signs have more than 15%?
Correct. Or more than 15%. And I would say probably half of those. Probably half of those would only have, would not have more than the 50%.
Ms. Kerr? If, if one of the reasons businesses comes to Murfreesboro is the attractiveness of the city, if we do away with any kind of regulation, isn't that going to produce mass clutter for the, for the, for the city and the, and its residents and people driving down and seeing sign after sign after sign after sign, completely covering up the windows? So, with that line of thought, wouldn't it be reasonable to regulate to a percentage? And, and 50% has, has come out. But dropping it and just letting the market do whatever it wants to do, I think would be a clutter contest.
Yes, sir.
I tell you, before we, we'll need to discuss, finish discussing this and have a public hearing tonight, but before we vote on this and, and assign a percentage to this, I'd like to propose that the Planning Commission have a little field trip and let's go around and let the staff show us exactly what we're talking about on some of these things locally. We didn't want to put up pictures of local businesses and one ID businesses in particular because I think all these photos from out of town. But I'd like us to really talk about this in more detail, maybe at an afternoon meeting before we start assigning definite percentages to it. I wouldn't like to do that tonight. I'd like more discussion about it.
I, I think that's a great idea because then we, you, you get in, I hate to say this, but you get into an opinion of what's a tasteful sign and then what's not a tasteful sign, if that's the right adjective. And, and then you get as to whether, like you say, what percentage of glass that you're covering. I do think that it would be good for us to look and see, but I, I'll make the comment now, I don't think we can go to zero. I don't, that, I don't think that's fair, honestly. We, I, I just don't think that's fair.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I, I like the idea of a trip to, to look at. Road trip. Road trip.
A road trip.
That's just one, one little piece of what we're talking about.
Okay, well, let's, let's move on if we can then and readdress that. Mrs. Jones, what else did you have next?
I, I had a question about the banner signs that you were talking about, just being on utility poles, but not decorative poles? I just kind of got lost on the banner.
On private property, on private property within a complex or a business parking lot on their private poles. They will not be lining Med Center Parkway utility light poles at this time with any type of banners. That could be something in the future to be looked at, you know, the, the gateway into Murfreesboro putting, you know, Main Street, not, maybe not Main Street, but banners that are decorative, that show fall colors or springtime or something of that nature. But right now, it's not included in what we are proposing.
And was that just regarding the gateway or was that the whole city?
Just the gateway. They're already allowed in several areas within Murfreesboro, down Murfreesboro to.
Down Main Street.
Down Main, sorry, down Main Street to MT Boulevard, all down MT Boulevard. It could possibly, we've written in here where it could extend to Greenland Drive. And we also are writing into the possibility of extending it all the way down to the Train Depot off West, on West Main.
These banners on private, private light poles, private utility poles are now allowed in commercial highway. And so, some of the, I guess the large car lots are an example of the uses in commercial highway that, that have those banners in their interior poles, not on the utility, and maybe a utility pole, but it's not a, not an MED pole or a Murfreesboro pole that's out next to, in the right-of-way. It's their interior, a pole that's within their, their property. And expecting that that was going to come up with some of the new uses coming into the gateway, we wanted to just go ahead and get ahead of it. And those, those don't look bad, you know? They're, they're really not a problem. And we did, we do allow them in, on the hospital as part of their PUD, I'm sorry, their PSO, their private sign, uh, sign overlay, that they have those kinds of banners throughout the campus on their, you know, on their lot. Yeah, so that was, that's the reason for adding this.
It's like the Oak Shopping Center, if they want. It's like the Oak Shopping Center, if they wanted to, you know, put banners up from time to time, prevent, you know, promotions for their businesses, or they allow the businesses to swap out different types of these banners on their property, then they will be allowed to do that. And it's one for every 50 feet of frontage of the property. So it pretty well regulates itself that they can't overdo it.
I have a few notes on the thing here, Ms. Kerr, if I might. Flag poles in residential areas, no sign permit or fee is required for that in residential areas.
Flag poles? Flag poles for one and two home dwellings do not have to have a permit or a fee. Apartment complexes would have to have a permit and fee. Actually, it's a permit without a fee.
My question is, are there any regulations pertaining to size or proximity to the right-of-way?
Yes, sir. A flag pole has to be 20 foot from the right-of-way, and they are, depending on which zone you're in, in a commercial highway zone, it's 230 square foot combined between three different flag signs or one flag sign at 150 square foot.
In a residential area?
Yeah, that's commercial area.
I'm talking about residential areas.
You're one in residential. Let's see, I have to get a different book.
I was just looking at section three.
98 square foot for residential on flag poles. Any one flag sign cannot be more than 40 square foot and 98 square foot between the three.
Okay.
And the maximum height is 35 foot if it's ground-mounted, if it's wall-mounted, it is 20 foot, and if it is outrigger-mounted, it's 16 foot. And I apologize, it is five foot from the right-of-way and eight foot from power lines in a residential zone.
I was just concerned about if it was not a substantial enough pole, the chances of it being able to blow over in a storm into the right-of-way onto cars or something driving by.
Power lines.
If it was too close, power lines, whatever, yeah.
That's something that we can look at when we are reviewing, redoing the... That will be the next ordinance amendment that we hope to have to you soon, would be the permanent sign section. We are working on it diligently, and we do hope to have that to you later this year.
Okay. Next thing I made a note of was under prohibited signs, item 20, vehicle signs.
On the current ordinance or what's being proposed? Because they've been moved around for clarity.
The big long one.
Okay. Okay.
This doesn't say current or proposed. It just has it on here.
Item 20 down at the bottom of the page, is that the current ordinance or proposed?
That is proposed.
Okay, you've got under prohibited signs, vehicle signs as defined, when a vehicle is parked in public right-of-way, public property, or on private property, it's visible from the public right-of-way, like you stated a while ago.
Yes, sir.
What about, you know, I think of all kinds of businesses who have their trucks and stuff parked at night and weekends in their parking lots, you know, Comcast and plumbing companies and electrical companies and things like that, that would have the vehicles parked that you can easily see from the right-of-way. Now, are you saying they're going to have to hide those trucks somewhere?
No, sir. If they use them in the daily course of their business, that's where that B comes in. The sign is not incidental to the use of the vehicle. If the sign is there purely for advertising purposes, that is prohibited. If it is a vehicle that you use in the daily course of your business, such as a Comcast vehicle, or up here in Jackson Heights, the thrift store truck, that as long as he is parked in a legal parking spot on his lot, he is allowed to have that vehicle for the daily course of his business, or if it's their personal vehicle that they have wrapped with the vinyl on it and they're driving it to and from work and it is parked in their work parking lot, that is allowed as well.
Okay. And also, like, auction trucks and things like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kerr, what about signage on vehicles for sale? Do they have to come now for permits?
They...
You'll see...
That usually would...
I say straight vehicle.
As long as it's got a tag on it, that would be, I think, more of a property maintenance issue as where they're parking them. We do not actually regulate... They're usually on private property, and they're not there for very long most of the time. And I'm not really certain how...
I missed part of the question.
How it's regulated.
The question is, vehicles for sale. You will see vehicles for sale periodically on lots or just at a spot where they can. And they'll have the for-sale sign. And is there a permit for that? Or they just pull up?
No, we don't. We don't try to regulate that. Now, if it's sitting in a right-of-way, I would imagine that our police department would be looking at it, certainly if it's very close to a road. And if there's too many of them for too long and a used car... And it looks like a used car lot, I'm sure will be... You can't run a used car lot in your front yard. But you can advertise your car for sale in your parking lot.
In common areas.
You're talking about, like, at the shopping center, where they park them out at Broad Street?
Right, in common areas.
And leave it right there?
That would be a private property issue, I think, as far as we're concerned. Most of the mall managers or property managers are not going to want someone putting a car there. A few do allow it, and we haven't tried to regulate that.
In the past, that has typically been regulated by, as David said, say, on Broad Street, if you had a particular large tract of land that they park them on, typically, the landlord will stop that after a while because they're basically turning their lot, and it can be a zoning issue for us because they're not using their lot for its intended purposes. You know, you're driving down the road and you see one car out there.
One day.
You see 10 or 15, you know, then they're not using that lot for its intended purposes for the patrons of the businesses there. So there has been times when we have went and notified them of a zoning violation and/or if somebody, as David said, uses their home and they put their car out there for sale, typically, nothing's said. But if they start showing up repetitively and they keep doing that, then they're marketing cars out of their residential lot, and that is zoning violation, and we will notify them that that is a violation. Typically, the landlords will handle that for us once we notify them. They'll rectify that.
Sometimes in shopping centers, we do have to regulate when it's a business that is not located in that shopping center, that parks a vehicle in their lot and leaves it there. And we do notice that, and at that point, we do send a notice to them to remove that vehicle. Sometimes they do get permission from, you know, the large anchor store there that says, yeah, you can park your truck out there overnight, you know, so you don't have to drive it home to your neighborhood. The sign ordinance doesn't allow for that, so we have to go to the property owner of the anchor store and make them aware of that.
I've got numerous notes in here, Ms. Kerr, but I don't know if I want to go into a lot of great detail on this tonight until we can do our road trip.
Yes, sir.
And go around, and that way, I think we can get a lot of questions answered. But anybody else on the Planning Commission have any part of this they'd like to?
While we're here, let's try to look at our... And do you want to have this road trip an hour, two hours? You're going to be out next time, so you won't be here for the road trip if we have it at the next meeting. We need to kind of look at our calendars and determine when we want to do this.
Public hearing.
But we're going to have a public... Yeah, but, you know, is it after or before we determine the date?
The sign ordinance would drive anybody off.
They've had enough.
I don't blame them. We don't have to do it necessarily in conjunction with one of the meetings. We just need to try to do it when the majority of us can go.
Okay.
I can go, I can go. But we need to try to get it where we can, and we can find out when the city van...
Is available.
Find out when the city van is running, operating, and when we can get it out by breaking down.
They've got some new ones now.
We borrow a rubber bus.
Multiple vans. Vans is going to be the problem.
Let's let the staff just work on that.
Okay.
May I... Could you please explain to us why we're looking to increase the total number of temporary signs per lot? I mean, I always find that the nastiest season of all for signage is political season.
Yes.
And I think it looks nasty with three on each lot, and you're proposing to increase that to four on each lot. Is... I know some politicians can't get enough signs up with their name on it. I don't understand that. But why are we increasing that?
Well, it is in relation to request, businesses primarily. As the city has grown, we get more shopping centers. The more shopping centers, they seem to be getting larger. And if you've got a shopping center that has 10, 15 businesses in it, and they're regulated to three signs, and one of them is a leasing sign by the leasing agent, they get two signs on that lot that might encompass two road frontages and has a lot of area and space. So we thought we would compromise and be able to give just a little bit more leeway on a little bit more signage for those, to be able to help those businesses with multiple lots, I mean, multiple businesses on a lot.
And also, we have large tracts of land, and if it's a half-acre lot or if it's a 40-acre lot, you can put three signs on a 40-acre lot, and they disappear. You put four signs maybe on a half-acre, you're going to notice it a whole lot more. So we're trying to take in consideration that we have large tracks, small tracks, and also, as everybody's aware, that the election, our city elections, have been combined, which means we will, when we have those elections, we will also have more campaign signs. So we took that in consideration as well, to allow more people to be able to support their candidates.
Thanks, Ms. Jones. Anybody else?
I don't want to... I've got one, because I'm afraid I'm going to forget to ask when we do this. So you talked about the different types of temporary signs. Can you define for me, and does it differ with respects to how you define the time limit of a temporary sign? Meaning, what is that? You can have a temporary sign for a month? You can have a temporary sign for forever? What's the time limit with respects to a temporary sign?
Well, there are different regulations for different types of conditionally-allowed temporary signs.
Okay.
The main one that is used is the other temporary signs, the one that we are proposing to increase from three to four signs. That one is for 10 days following the temporary purpose. A temporary purpose may be they've got a sale, and after that sale goes off, then they have to remove that sign. Temporary purpose may be a temporary business that comes in, and they're only going to be there for six months. We don't promote them to be used as a permanent sign, however they do because of the way that you write it in the ordinance, because of rules and regulations and laws that don't let you put a start date and an end date on that. Correct me if I'm wrong, David.
We define a temporary sign as temporary because of the materials or structure or purpose. And we generally do not put a time limit on that. And I guess the classic case could be an election sign. I mean, we would say, you know, Smith for governor, that sign is no longer a temporary sign 10 days after the election. But if Mr. Smith says, huh, I'm running again next time, and I'm starting my campaign right now, well, it's kind of hard to argue with that. Most temporary signs are made out of not very sturdy material. And again, the election signs, if they're the fiber board or plastic or the, you know, paper, they don't last long. And we do have a rule on any temporary sign. If it starts looking shabby, if it's all tattered up, you need to either replace it or just remove it. But we don't put strict time limits on any of the temporary signs, except that the temporary event is what, 10?
We can't favor a non-commercial or commercial message.
True. The locate... The off-site directional...
Directional signs.
They have... We do have a limit on those. And those would include the, as Amelia said, you know, Circus in Town Saturday with an arrow pointing someplace, or, you know, at Miller Coliseum. And those are limited to how many days before?
10 days before and have to be removed 2 days after. And they can only have four for the event in town.
Right. One of the most common of those are the real estate auction signs. And, you know, they're obviously that... And that's really the only temporary sign that's allowed to be off-premise. All other temporary signs are on the property that the owner or... And again, even if, you know, whether it's commercial or non-commercial, if it's... If some business wants to say, now hiring, that sign has to be on their lot, not on some other lot. Unless they can qualify for a billboard someplace and they want to invest that kind of money in their hiring campaign, they can do that. But other than that, the temporary sign has to be on your lot, whoever it is that's putting up the sign.
So are you saying that all these, traditionally, I think it's mattress businesses, I won't point out any particular one, but I think those are pretty common on the corner of Thompson Lane and Medical Center Parkway. Are those in violation because they're not on their property, or?
They have a lot of different names, sign spinners, human signs. Those are more... Number one, to have those, they're supposed to be holding it. They're not supposed to be... It's not supposed to be set on a stand and they walk away from it. Then, at that point, it's off-premise advertising. But... And holding is a difficult word to define, too.
Freedom of speech.
As long as... And there have been some court cases on this. I don't know of any in Tennessee, but other places, as long as there's someone sitting there with his hand on it or her hand on it, they're holding the sign. You walk away from it completely and leave it there, then you're not. And their, you know, sidewalks are a traditional public forum, a traditional place for people to speak with very highly protected free-speech rights. It is... Some people believe that it's possible to distinguish on sidewalks between commercial and non-commercial speech, that a person carrying a campaign sign for a political candidate would have more right to be on the sidewalk than a person carrying a sign to sell a mattress. That has not been very thoroughly litigated. I don't think we want to be the test case. On the other hand, you know, sometimes we are. And if there are cities here in Tennessee, I know, that have passed ordinances restricting the access of people, sign spinners, any kind of commercial advertising on sidewalks, I'm not aware of any of those having gone to court yet, and I'm not sure what will happen. I'm sure they will. But I don't... I can't predict what will happen.
Ms. Kerr, do you have anything else that you need to present? Okay. Any questions or any more comments on what we have here in front of us for Ms. Kerr or Mr. Ives before we open the public hearing? Okay. Thank you very much. In that case, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission, my name's Lyle Lynch. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard tonight, and I'm here to encourage the Planning Commission to adopt the strictest temporary sign permit that you can live with. When we prepare plans for buildings, we often include signs, and we typically come to building department staff. And based upon the particular zoning, they can tell us immediately the amount of area the sign can be, the height the sign can be, and if and what type of illumination is allowed. And they're very strict with that, because we prepare drawings, and it shows to the inch, you know, the area of the sign and the height of the sign. Based on that, they can review it and approve it, and then they also... Based on that, they can review it and approve it, and then they also verify this before occupancy by going out to the project and confirming conformance to the sign regulations and the drawings we provided. Temporary signs are a whole different issue. And I was looking around, and most of y'all were here back when we used to have, do you remember, the yellow mobile signs in front of all the businesses? And I'm not sure, I was a very young child at the time, of course. So I am not sure what all y'all went through in order to get those out, but I do recall particularly Memorial, you couldn't see the buildings for the temporary yellow signs. Let's see here, so I'm here to speak against, again, a strong ordinance for the, against the temporary signs. Specifically, I do have some pictures of, and these are in Murfreesboro. And specifically, there was a building that has several, turn the overhead on. Specifically, there's, it's hard to enforce, and with the permanent signs, it's much easier when you have a definition of how high the sign can be. Obviously, controlling temporary signs is going to be very difficult, requiring specific definitions of window signs, banners, transparencies, and other issues. Specifically, I brought some photographs. Years ago, you can recall, there was a rotting down restaurant at the corner of Memorial and Clark Boulevard, you know, Northfield, Memorial and Northfield. Thank you, Matthew. And we were very excited to see that finally torn down and a very nice gas station built. This place has some earth colors in the gas station. It's not, you know, the bright red and orange trying to grab you. And one of the nice things is it has these nice masonry pillars around the columns of the, of the cover that covers the gas pumps. But as you can see, the nice columns are covered up by here's one, and here's one, and here's one, and here's one of all the, I'll call them temporary signs. And I use that definition kind of loosely, and that I read through your packet, and I don't claim to understand it. My apologies. But this is an example of the very nice masonry. When it opened, you had the nice earth-colored masonry around the, around the columns, and fairly quickly, they were covered up with temporary signs. Here is a view of, again, another one of the columns, and right here is a temporary sign that the sign seems to went away. We have a sign here. And another definition. I consider it visual cluttered that they had to include their email address on the pumps. You know, you don't really need that. Is that a sign? That's something that's going to have to be addressed. This is a very similar view to that, and what reason I put this one in here is it shows the trash can, and there's numerous trash cans. They were very generous with trash cans in this facility. But any vertical surface here really became a sign. And let's see, you can buy three packs of cigarettes and you save 10 cents. You know that because of the trash can, you know, is a trash can a sign? Here is the pumps, and as you can see, the pump stops somewhere around here. Everything above that is a sign. There are little plastic things that are attached to the top of the pump that stick up, and again, without a clear definition, that's going to be something that's very difficult to enforce. One of these, right here is a symbol telling you what credit cards they receive. The rest is advertising an app, selling chewing tobacco, all kinds of stuff attached to the top of the pump. Window signs, this particular business has windows, I'm going to guess 50% is what we see in this picture, but already you have in this location, you have signs on top of the signs. So if you don't have enough visual clutter, you've got signs on top of the signs. Here is the front door, and I'm guessing that's about 50%, but to the right over here, there's an interesting thing. There's a fire extinguisher, and again, this is a gas station, and then this is a switch that's obviously the emergency cutoff switch. But my point is, with the amount of visual clutter over here, the first thing you see is that ATM sign in the window, and that's something that you need to see, which is the emergency cutoff switch to the pumps. And here's the street view. Again, the frustration is, I know that the sign that says Murphy Express there at the center was reviewed by the building department, was probably measured before they moved into the building to make sure it complied. But then, soon as the building department's gone, they strap banners around the best, rest of the, rest of canopy to, that really render the previous work fairly useless, last, and I'll leave it alone. Here's just another example of a temporary sign in that, in that area. So in short, I'm using that as an example of why I think it's important that we address this issue, and would encourage, again, that spending the time and energy to make proper definitions and make something that's enforceable and agreeable to all so that it can be regulated throughout the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lynch. Appreciate your, so correct. Anybody else? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mrs. Kerr, do you have anything else for us tonight?
Try to put some explanation to some of this for you. Matthew, I guess if you would, these up from the bottom to the top. And the overhead. Okay, this is the backside of the pumps. We do not regulate anything that we do not see from the right of way. They did have a lot of signs at the front of the pumps, and their garbage cans at the front of their pumps until we told them, and they had other signs on the fronts of the pumps that we made them remove. Anything that we cannot see or readable from the right of way, we do not enforce. So, and all of the signs that you see, these, these small signs, those are what you would call a convenience sign. Now, everybody takes advantage of that sometimes and uses them a little bit more than to say an ATM inside or restrooms available inside. They, you know, they're, it's hard to disseminate between what types of signs you allow them to have in that situation. The banners, let's see if I can find it. The banners are allowed, they have been measured, and banners are allowed in Murfreesboro to be 120 square feet combined total between two banners. They leave them up, they take them down, they trade them out, they do know what size they are allowed to be, but they can have a combined total area between two banners of 120 square feet, which is quite large. If that's a 10 by 12, you know, that's a pretty large area to be covered with the banner.
We tried so hard to get those canopies off.
The, I will agree with the window signage, and because of the conflict in the ordinance that we are trying to clear up, to get some resolution as to what to do with, with the window signage, and hopefully, we can come to a resolution that we can begin a better enforcement of window signage. And there again, the signage that's on the pump, anything that is less than what is two and a half square feet, and I apologize, I failed to mention that we are increasing the size of a convenience sign from two and a half square foot to three square foot just for computing easability, you know, trying to make it a little bit simpler to measure that out. We are so going, also are proposing to change enter and exit signs out of a building parking lot, directionals through the parking lot, from four and a half square feet to five square feet, and put a restriction of three foot overall height on those. But those, those would be considered temporary signs, and this sign on the backside of that, that island would not be visible from the right of way, so we would not count it. This particular sign-
It's visible from Silver Springs Road.
Excuse me?
It's visible from Silver Springs Road, which is a right of way. Why are you just considering Memorial?
Well, because they put it on the very far end of that, oh, Silver Springs Road, you can't, you, there's, there's a readability and a, and a vis, I mean, and being able to see it. They put them in places and they try to disguise them, but they still get three. This one, they put in and take out. We go in, I have visited this establishment numerous times, as well as my partner. There again, we try to be patient, they change managers. Manager doesn't know the new rules, you explain the new rules to the new manager. It seems like these convenience stores have revolving doors on a lot of their management, and we explain a lot to these individual businesses like this. I've just, there is a reason, there is a rhyme, you know, to the madness sometimes, but just wanted to explain a little bit of that. And yes, you are correct, at times, we do have to go in and tell them, you have to remove that sign, it is visible. Mr. Smitherman?
I think, I appreciate Mr. Lynch bringing those photos, but I think this is something we really need to look at closely when we do our tour with you. And, you know, we all notice this stuff while we're fueling up our cars, and I drive by this place numerous times every day, and I wondered, how can they get by with all those signs? You know? But, you know, we might need to look at it. And I think it's something that needs more, more discussion before we make any final recommendations to the council.
Mr. Wade used the word clutter, and I think that we need to think about the word clutter in our deliberations over the next few weeks.
Okay, Mr. Whitaker, there's no motion that we need to bring forward pertaining to following this public hearing, since there's nothing on the agenda to vote on as far as this goes. We don't need a motion to defer making a recommendation on this.
I would, I would recommend a motion to defer. I think it would be, yeah, that'd be appropriate.
Yes. Chairman, move we defer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The great standard of public service, we stand deferred. Okay? Anything else? Any other business, Mr. Whitaker?
No other business, but before we get completely away from this topic, I'd just like to point out that staff did and has spent a tremendous amount of time on the draft before you. No matter what the commission brings back, keep in mind that the, whether it's a 15%, 50%, whichever, this section of the ordinance does need to be rewritten. That's definite. Also, keep in mind with whatever you come back, make, consider the enforcement value. No matter what we write, it has to be enforceable. You know, we can have all kinds of things on the books, but if we can't enforce it, then it's of no value. And I just challenge the commission to consider those items as we have. Not saying what we presented is exactly spot on, but do consider those things when we, when you're riding around and we are looking at these items.
Well, I've told you when you were across the hall up there, and Mrs. Kerr, several times, I appreciate the hard work y'all have done on this sign ordinance and the question we have every year, and it has to be studied, tweaked, and retweaked every year, it seems like. But it's a, it's a moving target to try to keep it fair, but then protect the city as far as our aesthetics goes here in the city as well. So we'll continue to work on that, and we'll never have it perfect, but we'll do the best job that we can.
It's job security.
Any other business needs to come before this planning commission tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.